Hi, welcome everybody to the Planning Commission on Thursday, May 23. First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as listed?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Thank you Neil. Moved by Neil, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Stephen, any discussion? Looks good. All right, seeing none, all in favor of the agenda?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now on to approval of the minutes from May 9. Is that too much feedback?
I can't hear.
Oh, yeah. Or not feedback, but speakers. Motion to approve the minutes of May 9?
I just had a couple of small edits, but yeah.
This is my own picky. Motion and a second, then discuss, and then...
That seems so, always seems so backwards to me.
It really does.
You should discuss and then...
That's what I think.
Yeah. I move we approve of the minutes.
All right.
That's what you want, right?
Yeah. Moved by Andrew, seconded by...
I'll second that.
By Neil, okay, any discussion?
Only thing I noticed was that I think both Don and Sean's names were spelled wrong. Don is Rendell, R-E-N-D-E-L-L, I believe. And Sean McFadden, I think, is M-A-C capital F rather than small f, so...
Good catch.
That's a record show.
Yeah.
Otherwise, it seemed to capture the discussion.
And I was, I don't know if it needs to be added for clarity, but the definition of core forest, we left in X.
Yep.
And just a comment to say...
We're working on it.
With X to be defined after more discussion with the Natural Resources Committee.
Yeah. And the other edit, or, I don't know, we came after the meeting, but we had added those three, and we've since Jeff Loiter's, and are we, so are we gonna do that tonight?
Yeah, I can address that under other business.
Got it.
Because we do have that.
Just for Mary Ann's benefit, since it looks like she's gonna work from the tape, as far as the edits, you're, just to confirm.
Yeah.
X is okay, because I had told her I thought X was okay.
Yeah.
And you are intending to address that number later.
It's completely okay, I would just request a note saying that X will be defined after further discussion. Otherwise, it just says we agreed on this definition, and the definition has X in it.
Yeah. We beat that word, she'll get it.
That would make our jobs a whole lot easier if we could just put in variables.
Then you have to solve for them.
I know, right? Linear programming flashbacks. Any other discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor of the minutes as updated? Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Next is any disclosures relating to any potential conflicts of interest this evening? Seeing none. Then, open to the public, if there are any points to bring up not on the agenda this Seeing none. Okay, we'll move on to the public hearing from around accessory apartments. There are some motions in here, as Dean, as you highlighted prior to the meeting, the Commerce and Industry South in section 1210.3, the second instance of the word accessory should be moved to be after the word new. Just saying that for Mary Ann's clarity.
I can project it for the audience at home, or...
I mean, yeah, could do that, but it's...
If it's okay, what not?
Yeah, if anybody has any problems, let us know. And then, let's see, was there any, I guess prior to the motion, the hearing is open. All I need to do is say that, right? Is there a procedural?
Open, and you can ask if there are any comments.
Yeah.
If you wanted any background information, or slides, or anything for context.
Yeah, I would say if there's anybody that's interested in seeing, well, the Planning Commission has reviewed this in multiple meetings, I don't know if, just in the interest of time that we had, if there's a particular thing that anybody wants to see, we could certainly bring it up. Are there any discussion points or questions from the material that we might want to look at? I did just want to, I wanted to ask one question around the definitions aspect. We put a, I just wanted to clarify, I think, did we put a max floor area of 1,500? But that's max, and otherwise it's a percentage, because it's 50% of the originating structure?
That was the intent that I remember.
Yeah, it was. Just in reading this again and seeing that we included such areas, such as personal storage areas, porches, and decks, and garages, or parts thereof, and in thinking about that, if, if somebody knows the dimensions of a garage, feel free to throw it out, but if you're, if you're looking at a, basically the max is defined by a 3,000 square foot house, right? And so hypothetically, if somebody wants to add an accessory apartment and their house is, say, 1,500 square feet, then that's gonna make that smaller, and if we're including garages and stuff, that makes that even smaller from a living perspective, and...
You mean the garage on the new...
On the new one, right.
Well, originally, we were talking about a smaller living area, so that's why we went to 1,500, was to allow a garage, I thought, for storage, because we were talking about 1,100, I think, or something.
We had been, and I'm not, I'm not saying this is a challenge, it was just more, I just wanted to clarify to make sure we're on the same page, because to me, it was, I was thinking that it's completely dependent on the size of the main house, and I get that, and 50% of that is one thing, but the smaller you get, I could see getting into edge cases where it starts making it very impractical to have any kind of accessory apartment. Now, it could be that there's no garage, and thus no parking, or parking is elsewhere, or whatever, I mostly just wanted to make sure that that was something that we had some thoughts on and were aware of.
You had talked about a floor, because there are some communities that include floors, a minimum size, but you ended up not going down that road.
Right. And it was just in rereading this, it sparked the thought, and I just wanted to make sure we were still thinking along those lines and not wanting to think about that a bit. We don't need to.
What would your suggested change be?
That you would exclude garages from the 1,500, or that that number would, that would be, max would be higher? I'm not sure what you're sort of, I'm not sure what you're...
It was more just something that I read it, and it didn't really feel right.
Okay.
And I don't know that I have a solution, it was more, I was hoping to have a little discussion, and somebody says, well, like Dean, you said, we had discussed having a minimum, which I, and I do remember that, I don't know if that's, is this concern practical?
So, is the concern that in a small house, if you have a large garage, an accessory dwelling, wouldn't it be possible with the 50%? Is that...
Yeah.
Am new to this discussion, obviously?
An accessory dwelling that also wanted to includes a garage as part of the accessory, I think, is what you're going with.
And it would be possible to do...
Because you can only go 50% of that existing house, it was 1,000 feet, you can only, you know...
But a small house, it's not likely to have two garages, and if there's, if it has a garage, I think it's probably more likely that the owner of the home is gonna remain in control of the garage, maybe the person that's in the apartment would get a space, so measure out nine by 18, and that's gonna, that's gonna go towards the 1,500 square feet.
Also, look at it as something that we prioritize for some of the denser parts of town, where we're trying to add more living units, but not necessarily more cars and more trap, right? It's the idea that these are in walkable areas closer to transit, so that, you know, I don't know that we'd want to create an incentive to make it easier to add a second garage and more cars.
And I agree, that wouldn't make sense. I think I was just considering the edge cases, like the gentleman that came in and was talking about the...
30%?
Yeah, and basically, he could have a 25 square foot thing or something, which didn't make any sense, and...
Right.
And I do think that there are other ways of handling that, and on a future agenda, we will talk about waivers, and I think those could be very helpful in the edge case area. I just mostly, I had the thought and wanted to throw it out there and see if there were any other comments on it.
I think if somebody has a 1,500 square foot house, now, that includes the garage or doesn't include the garage? It includes the garage.
If there is one...
But if there is one in the existing house, is that part of the basis on which we take the 50%, the garage too, the house and garage? So, there's an existing house and garage, and say it's 1,500 square feet, is that, are we counting the garage too in what is existing?
The basis for the size of the accessory apartment overall is the habitable area of the single-family house. That's...
All right, so that's exclusive of whatever garage is there, but a garage takes up, you know, a ton of space, so if somebody has a 1,500 square foot house, like a 24 by 24 garage, it's gonna be close to 600 square feet, so...
Is there supposed to be a formal accessory structure for rental?
Yeah, so I think it's, it's likely if somebody has a small house, they're not gonna give their accessory apartment a garage, that people just park outside, I think. The whole idea, I think, is just to have the size of the accessory subsidiary to the main house, so it would have to be, I mean, we've got to keep it smaller, and I think in that case, somebody would choose to put all that 50% into living space.
And I think...
I agree with that, yeah.
If somebody has a smaller home, they can just game the situation, put a dish on the home at the same time, I believe, and max out the accessory.
What we're talking about here is accessory apartments, and if somebody wanted to, if they had a 1,500 square foot house, and they wanted to build a garage and an accessory apartment, and they had enough lot coverage, then they could do that.
They could build a garage.
Sure.
Put it above the garage.
Right. So, really what we're talking about here is how big can the accessory apartment be? And what we're saying is 50% to a maximum of 1,500 square foot, and it's increased over the existing by 20%, right? So, I mean, we're giving people more.
Certainly.
Two bedrooms, up to 50%, 1,500.
But the way we're wording it is that people have the ability to put, like, any amount in porches and garages of that 50% for the accessory apartment, so it's not, we're not just saying that's habitable space in an accessory apartment, it's whatever space anybody wants to do with that, could be garage, porches, habitable space, and that amounts to the 50%.
In honesty, I'm not arguing...
I think we're agreeing.
Yeah, I think we are, and I'm not saying that there's something wrong with this, I think I just wanted to think it through, thinking about some of those edge cases, but it makes sense that one of...
Our experts.
Yeah, are there any comments from the committee?
I don't feel that we need to add anything more, I've listened to every, the whole discussion, and I think you've come around to our intent, so unless either of you have something that you want to add, but we were worried about the habitable part, but we caught up to that, and...
Yeah, and I think it is one of those things, that if there is a, if there is an edge case, then that could be something potentially handled through a waiver process to be determined, or it would be feedback that goes into any revisions down the line.
I would suggest that we don't count porches and decks and things as, against this, the livable square footage. I mean, I think those, those are facilities on a house that can really, really add to enjoyment of it, and I think we're basically kind of saying that, you know, it seems like social engineering to me, to say that, you know, a person who lives in an accessory unit, you know, has to make a decision between habitable space versus having a porch, what's the big deal?
Yeah, it seems like the downside would be you could build a, say, 1,000 or 1,500 square foot unit, and then, how do, what limit do you put on decks and porches that they're adding to that? To keep it subservient to the main house?
Well, maybe you could put some kind of an upward limit on it or something like that, but I don't see the harm in letting somebody have a little porch, or a deck, or something like that. I think it actually could probably make these dwelling units fit in to the context a little better, too.
I guess, I mean, they're not precluded from having them now, it's just...
Yeah, but, but aren't we saying that they have to make a decision between having a porch and having living space, habitable living space?
If they're feeling that they really must have close to 1,300 or 1,400 square feet, and that that additional area is gonna prevent them from having a porch, there had been some discussion about what the number 1,500 was, if it was, if you take out those constraints, what I remember was that people were talking about a number that was lower, like 1,200 or something else.
1,100.
Or 1,100, okay, and the idea was to...
That's kind of where we started, and then we expanded it to 15 to allow for storage or garages.
But the 15, I mean, the only, the only real consideration that I had here is that that 1,500 is at a, is being built alongside a house that's 3,000 square feet or larger, and for houses that are not that large, that number gets smaller, so it's more for somebody that has a smaller house, wants to add an apartment, most likely they would not have a garage.
Well, that was a 750 square foot accessory.
Which is essentially a duplex.
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm okay with...
But 750 square feet gives you pretty minimal space for accoutrements.
For one bedroom, or...
Whatever, I mean, just...
Right, it's more that when we've had these discussions, we're talking in terms of 1,500 square feet, and that is a, that's a use case, but that is not, that doesn't cover all of the cases.
It's the maximum size.
Yeah, right.
I think if we want to, to Kate's point, if we want to encourage people to have porches, just as, you know, to not just put a block of a building with, without any kind of communication with the outdoors, or with passersby, or anything like that, then that's what we're doing, we're saying, you know, if somebody wants the square footage, they're likely to put it in the habitable interior space and not in a porch. If we wanted to encourage porches, you know, Burlington encourages porches in certain ways, by, you know, relaxing the setbacks for front porches and things like that, just for that reason, you know, we could reword this to say, you know, to a maximum of, or exclude porches up to, like, 100 square feet, or something like that, in this, in this restriction. I mean, there could be ways that we could encourage people to have porches, I guess the downside would be that it's real easy to, for somebody to enclose their porch without anybody knowing it, and then all of a sudden, they've got a bigger place and still no porch. So, that's, that's the danger.
Yeah, it's kind of unfortunate, but where, where my head starts going is to the various ways that the system can be gained, and I completely understand that in a rational situation, somebody's not gonna build a porch that's three times the size of the, the place if we say porches aren't included, but, yeah, at the end of the day, I'm okay with how it is now, I just kind of wanted us to have that in our heads, and if...
Perhaps if we move forward on this, you guys can look back on it in six months and see if anybody's using it.
Right, yeah, that's true.
And if it's not working, try to find out why.
Right, yeah, good plan. All right.
Also makes, guys, if you earn their money when they design it, they gotta figure out a way to squeeze that porch in, right?
That's where we lose money.
Yeah.
Makes it harder.
Yeah.
More work.
Carnegie and MIT, I think he can probably figure out how much it is.
Any other comments or discussion points?
I just want to take another shot at conditional use. I'm not opposed to detached accessory, I'm opposed to it being a permitted use, and the reason for that is it's, by permitting it, we haven't put any conditions or parameters on this, where these structures can go.
But don't we have restrictions and parameters with setbacks and building envelopes?
We have setbacks, yes, but what I'm saying is if you have a lot, there's no controls on how far this will go, there probably should be some sort of minimum lot size for detached accessory, because some lots are just too small for two structures. There should be building envelopes, particularly in rural areas where we're trying to keep housing together. Character of the area should be something that's considered, and loss of viewscapes, solar access to neighbors, these are all things that in a permitted use will get no hearing, no one will, it's a permitted use, people will see a posted permit, they can go make their complaints, but it's a permitted use, they're gonna get what they want to do, whereas a conditional use is set up to protect the rights of homeowners, and when we talk about the rights of homeowners, most of these people buy into a community, they buy a neighborhood, they don't just buy a house and assume somebody's gonna build something next door, they, they look at it and they ask, what's gonna happen over here, what's gonna happen there? So, they're, you know, this is where they want to live, this is how they want to live, and a permitted use can allow that to change quickly. So, the conditional use isn't, isn't meant to say no, it's meant to give people an opportunity to help, or ask someone to help them move this thing in a way that is less negative to their property. So, that's, that's the whole argument, and the good thing about a conditional use, it can say no, and occasionally, there's a time and a place where no may be the answer you should attach to the structure, so I'm, that's, that's my whole argument.
No, yeah.
And I don't want to, you know...
Yeah, I get you.
I just wanted to explain.
And I do hear that, and I wonder if that's something, though, that we would, we had some good discussion around that, and around this, and my takeaway was that the conditional use, if it, if there aren't regs that can be actively enforced, like you're talking about minimum lot size and character of the neighborhood and that sort of thing, and to me, those seem like subjective things that the DRB would be the one doing the approval, and they would find themselves in a space that says, well, we just don't like what you're doing, there's no actual reg to back it up. Like, there is no minimum lot size, right? So...
No, I'm saying if you're doing a permitted, if you're doing a permitted use without those conditions, there's nothing, there's no, homeowners don't have an opportunity.
But are those conditions...
So, I was saying, these conditions could have been added to the permitted use, if you had those permissions, those types of conditions set up with a permitted use, then I wouldn't have a problem with a permit, because somebody, Dean, or somebody would be looking at it and saying, you perhaps don't make this criteria, or...
But that, I guess where I'm coming from is that same argument applies to the conditional use, is that if you...
So, if you did just a conditional use, you don't need these conditions here, it's just the homeowner going in and saying, here's the problem, they're putting up this two-story structure next to where I want to put a solar panel on my property, so DRB can say, well, maybe you should move this house over to the other side, or, it's something that simple. It's a little protection, it's not significant, and I don't think it's that big an issue, Dean was saying, possibly two people in the last year may have asked for this conditional use, so it's, you know, if...
I find that on a small lot, you're just as likely to be putting your addition rather than a separate building next to somebody's solar access, so if the lot is small, there's really only a few places you can really put something, and whether it's...
Protections for the neighbor.
But whether, but there should also be protections for the homeowner and the property owner themselves.
Where we disagree on where we're going.
And if, you know, when, in these kind of things where there's a conditional use and, and a neighbor doesn't like something, basically, everybody doesn't like change, and I've never seen anything that doesn't get contested if there's a neighbor close by, and so it'll be a contentious situation, whether it's...
Everybody in town is a neighbor, every single person in town is a neighbor.
Which is...
So, which means they all could have, whose rights are we looking out for? We looking out for the guy that's...
The adjacent property owner is what you're talking about.
And I think we have to look out for everybody's rights, I don't think it's an onerous thing at all, that, conditional use is, it's a protection for homeowners, that's all it is, and I can't argue with it, Stephen, if, you know, it, it may be, you know, a hardship for somebody who wants to put it in a certain place.
I'd also like to think that neighbors can communicate effectively, which I know is not...
Good luck with that.
Yeah, right? I know that's not, sometimes can be a dream.
Anyway, I've said my piece, and it's all...
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, and, and I would say that, I would encourage to bring this up in terms of whether or not it's permitted or conditional, I still see it as, yes, the DRB could say no, but under what conditions are they saying no? And to me, a lot of those get to be subjective.
They're not looking to say no, they're...
Right, I'm saying that, as you said, they could say no if it's a conditional use, whereas permitted...
Right, there is no no, and maybe there should be, that's what I'm saying.
The conditional use criteria... You'd have to not meet one for the board to say no.
Otherwise it isn't...
And the conditional use criteria are looking at things like traffic generation and demand on municipal facilities, and now there is character of the area, I'm just, I'm not sure which of the conditional use criteria, Dick, that you're thinking would be the basis for the DRB's denial, because the statute says that...
I think it'd be very rare to deny.
Okay, but nonetheless, if it's rare, are you thinking it would be based on character of the area?
You know, maybe there isn't a denial, I'm not sure.
Because...
I was thinking that in, there are cases where they just shouldn't have detached structure, maybe there's not enough room, or maybe it is too much of an impact on a neighbor. So, they, I'm saying they could say no to the detached structure, they can still have a two-bedroom accessory apartment, it just maybe has to be attached.
And recognizing that we still have setback rules, so in terms of, I mean, it wouldn't be like somebody would build the accessory apartment right up on a property line that would then shade somebody's solar unit that would be right on their property line.
It's possible.
It could happen, but the neighbor could also plant a tree, or, you know. But yeah, as far as conditions that we could, or not conditions, but criteria that we could add even for the permitted uses, I would encourage DOT be put into that, because that would help the administrative decision as well if there was criteria that we felt was warranted.
Corey? I was just gonna say, to, to the idea of criteria that would be evaluated, I think the kind of stuff that Dick's talking about are the kinds of things that would need to be written into the conditional use process, so if people were amenable to Dick's idea, and you basically split the proposal so that there was now, or you retained an item under conditional uses, I think you also then would need to think about adding something in the conditional use criteria that specifically gets at what it is that Dick's talking about. If it's in the conditional use section, an administrator isn't going to be able to go grab it when they get a permitted use application, it would have to be something that's listed as one of the standards, but they would have to apply to all permitted uses, or you'd have to get at it some other way. So, Dick, when you were putting together those ideas, did you come up with a proposal? Maybe the group doesn't want...
Are you talking about the permitted use? No, I was just saying, these things don't exist in the permitted use that we're, that we're talking about passing tonight. I wasn't, I wasn't proposing that...
I think my argument is that they, they're not part of a conditional use either, like, there's no criteria that the DRB would use.
No, but a conditional use gives people an opportunity to have their say, the permitted use does not.
What are the, what was your list again? Can you say?
Well, my list was just a list I jotted together, there's probably other things, but I said minimum lot size, there should be a certain lot size, and Steve will argue with me all day that he can squeeze a second house on any lot. He probably can.
Well, if you can squeeze an addition, you can squeeze a second house.
Building envelopes, and again, I was emphasizing rural area there, because we just put a big reg together, I thought we did a really good job, and we're trying to create an area that's still rural, but add structures, so a building envelope, having it close to, and I was thinking a quarter acre, but that could be any number. A character of the area was just that, perhaps to give it some kind of design scale or something, so that it kind of fit in with, with the neighborhoods, and... And just protecting viewscapes, solar access. And I'm not talking about viewscapes that are 80 miles away. I'm just talking about something immediate that maybe they have a view of the river or they, and somebody's going to put a house right in between them and the river or something.
But aren't those things that even under a permitted use? Like, there are certain places where you just can't build. Like, you can't build in a wetland. You can't build in a.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know. I mean, would this give somebody? Because you're right, the P, the rural PUD that we just went through where saying 60% should remain open space, this would basically enable an accessory apartment to just be on the land, but it still has to conform to the other restrictions around building anything, any kind of structure.
I don't know. It's pretty nebulous. I don't know what the reg would be, what the rules are. And that's what I'm saying.
The buildings we're talking about are pretty small. At the top end in a rural area, we're talking about a 30 by 50 structure. And that's just if everything's on one floor. So half that, if it's two floors, so 30 by 24 building footprint for two floors. And on a rural area, if somebody's got 30 acres or whatever, I don't think that it's, you know, we need to set up rules where they can only put it within a quarter acre, you know, footprint that includes their house. I mean, we can't be like so restrictive that nobody can do anything.
Stephen, we can't. We're protecting other people's, the way other people look at it as well. But I don't really want to argue with.
And that's fair, yeah.
I'm done.
Fair. Yeah, I would, yeah, I think we should move forward. I do like the idea of just assuming we get this to the select board and if they pass it, doing a check-in and just keeping an eye on what sorts of applications we're getting and are there issues that we need to fine tune? Because part of me, I think my core resistance to that is whether or not it's permitted or conditional. Yes, it creates opportunities for arguments to be heard in front of a DRB, but it also can put the DRB in an ambiguous position where they don't have firm rules that they can go off of. So it ends up being a subjective decision that also creates unhappiness. Just a thought.
In the rural, and I know I'm new to all of this, but sort of listening to this discussion, isn't it possible that someone could have a house on the minimum lot size in the rural district and use this? So you have a large house, you build a 1,500 square foot house, you have to put a separate driveway and essentially dividing up the lot? Because 30 acres is very different from.
10 acres.
Cutting up a 10 acres or five acres, putting in a second driveway, a second lot to a 1,500 square foot house. And that's the extreme, but it seems like, is that the worry? Is that that happened under this?
Yeah, all kinds of things come into play. Stormwater is, you know, a big issue in town. And the reason I kick stormwater out is I'm in the stormwater committee. And I'm aware of it, but it's a constant. It's not just Shelburne that is being plagued by stormwater. All our communities now are. So extra long driveways, separating the structures means, yeah, it all adds up.
It seems like that might be the outside case as well, like you're talking about. But I just wanted to be clear if that could, was possible under this.
I think what the housing committee members might say, and I don't want to speak for them, but they may agree or disagree with me, is that it's creating housing. And I think a big part of the motivation for their proposal was the language in the town plan that's promoting the creation of additional housing. And so, you know, whether or not that owner of a 30-acre lot in the rural district is going to invest in a separate sewer system and all that just to create a home that they're going to be able to rent. If it's, I mean, what I heard you say was an example where maybe it's pretty far removed. Well, that might happen because they think that's going to be a good income earner for them. I'm not sure if it would be. What they're more inclined to do, based on experience, is to have it someplace close to their house because it's more useful to them when people come visit if it is used that way or if it's for a family member. The family member must live in one, the property owner must live in one or the other, though. That keeps it from being something that I think is more like subdividing or creating housing without subdividing.
Okay.
And I do think that's a valid consideration in the rural area. I know it's not the intention, but.
Oh, but I.
Could happen.
I mean, that homeowner is going to be the most impacted by any of that. I think it's, I just don't see the problem with that, right? If we can create another affordable type of housing.
But can't we?
In a different district other than just, then, I mean, there's not that many spots like that for people.
Can't we at least do it in that 40% area that we've, you know, said that the rural lots will, you know?
Right, but that's.
In the PUD, at least meet some requirement.
That's defined when it goes through the PRD.
But by statute, it would have to be, right? Because that 60% is preserved.
Does it have to go to?
Well, the PUD, if there's a development that was approved as a PUD and there's the defined open space, and if that is open space in a manner that has permanence, then the allowance for accessory apartments isn't going to allow them to violate the open space.
No, but if there isn't a PUD at this point.
Well, then we're not talking about a PUD.
No, but if we're talking about a multiple lot, a 10-acre lot, that's going to have a PUD at some point, or three.
No, it wouldn't necessarily have a PUD. It wouldn't be a development.
It would be just its lot, the whole accessory apartment thing.
I'm not saying that this is a PUD, but maybe it should meet some sort of criteria so that it will lie within wherever that.
So you're thinking that this could be a way to game PUDs? Someone comes in, they get an app, they get a permit for an accessory structure, accessory apartment, and they get their toe in the ground there, and then they come in later and say, I want to do a PUD, but the house is already there. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Well, if they did subdivide, they would have to then designate that 60% that's open space and make it a PUD, which would include those two structures if they're putting each one on a separate lot. But the thing is, we already allow this. It's just that we're expanding it from 30% to 50% of the existing building. People right now can put it where the second, you know, the accessory building, wherever they want to now, just as we've got it.
And I really think that's what I keep coming back to is that what we're doing is we're basically enabling more accessory apartments should people want to do them. And we're making that process a bit easier. And it is something that we could monitor. But regardless, they could do it today. It's just a conditional use. And if it got challenged, it would have to be challenged on the basis of relevant criteria, I would imagine. And we don't have that defined. So that's still something that we could define, independent of this, is how I'm seeing it. And that might give us some time to see what kind of projects we get coming through. And then that could help tailor things as well. Please.
My guess would be for accessory apartments, it'd be probably family oriented as far as a motivator. Because maybe, Stephen, maybe you can answer this question. But, you know, my guess is if you build a separate structure somewhere on the property, you know, basically building a small house just to rent it out, that'd be a long payback.
Right.
To cover the cost of that construction. I don't see that as a big motivator. Maybe I'm, maybe I'm wrong, but it just seems like a lot of money to build a little house. It costs a lot of money, and you can only get so much rent. But it would seem that an addition might be more sensible if that's the route you wanted to go, if your house would allow it. You know, some houses architecturally aren't really well-made for, well-designed for an addition. But it would be mostly, you know, for family-type use. And maybe you rent it out down the road, but you want to put grandma in there or something, or, you know, whatever, something like that. I mean, purely from an investment standpoint, they ought to just go buy an apartment building somewhere and, you know.
Right.
Get more bang for their buck. I just don't see it financially as, you know, as a big motivator, aside from a family use. Just my thoughts.
Yeah, and even with the, I mean, I get it. We put a regulation in place and we could say, yeah, well, we'll monitor this in a year and other things come up and we don't, and then things happen. In this case, though, based on the volume of permits that we saw in the chart not too long ago, it's not, not like there's a flood of those.
If you see a spike in the number of accessory apartments that are permitted in the next year, then, I mean, every year when the town report's done and those numbers are assembled, I mean, it's tracked, it will be tracked.
Yeah. All right, well, aside from this discussion, any other comments?
Just looking at the motion to close the public hearing.
Yeah, I'm ready. Do it.
I move that the public hearing on the proposed changes to the zoning bylaw, which may be summarized as changes that would simplify review procedures applicable to accessory apartments and modify the definition of accessory apartments in which were duly warned for this evening be closed.
Can we add the addition of that in the Commercial and Industry South?
Well, that would be after the hearing is closed, when he makes the motion to move it up.
Right. Fair enough. All right. Moved by Andrew. And is there a second?
Our second.
Oh, seconded by Kate. Sorry, missed that. And then, next one?
Do we have to? Do we? In favor of that first?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we do. You're right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This is why I have a good vice chair.
That's right. All about the rules of order. I move that the proposed changes to the zoning bylaw, which may be summarized as changes that would simplify review procedures applicable to accessory apartments and modify the definition of accessory apartments in which were duly warned for this evening be forward to the select board for its consideration and action, along with a copy of the associated bylaw change report, including a minor change in Section 1210.3 regarding moving the word accessory.
Second.
Moved by Andrew, seconded by Kate. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Right, okay. All right, and then, so that takes care of that, then? It's closed and that change is covered? Thank you.
Thank you for all your work.
Great descriptor.
Yes, thank you, guys.
Thanks for catching our error, too.
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks, Mike.
And Dean's error, you know.
And also surprising, we're only two minutes behind.
That's why I was ready to move it.
You're on it. Okay, so moving on to other zoning matters, the definitions. And we can, we can certainly chat a little bit. Well, Dean and I met on Tuesday when we were talking about the agenda. And we really, as far as definitions, were thinking that a lot of these needs should be processed by the Natural Resources Committee. I think it would be good to have them discuss some of these and give us some more detailed guidance. And I still, I still had some just questions around steep slope. I would personally be happy to address that through the Natural Resources Committee and just see how that discussion goes, because it's in height. But if there were any, in this definition section, are there any burning topics or anything that we want to address that moves this to natural resources?
Before we move it to them?
Yeah, or just ideas that we have or comments that we want to pass along to them to say, because otherwise, this is what we have to date come up with.
I was a little confused about what Don was talking about with the forest block. And did he want to change core forest to forest block? Was that the overall idea or was that just part of it?
I think that was his intention.
Sean's feeling like maybe that's a better way to deal with it.
Yeah, I got some, I emailed Sean and Susan Meegenberg, who's a forestry guru, you know, and part of that committee. And they had some pretty long, lengthy, detailed emails back. I wouldn't say that either ended up with really clarifying the issue, but that's where it was suggested that we maybe have, whenever we have another drink, meeting with them or we could, you know, invite them to have a discussion. But Susan's biggest issue, I guess if I could summarize, would be that core forest really, you know, as we talked about, is defined as, you know, away from things and a certain number of yards in from the edge of the forest. But that edge forest is just as critical for a lot of, you know, both creatures, potentially stormwater, all kinds of issues. So that, you know, just talking about protecting the core forest would be short-sighted, you know? And so the idea of a forest block and/or like Kate and we talked about last time about some of these connective pieces between blocks, that it would be better language in terms of protecting what's important for annual transit and that all the types of forest habitats that would be protected versus just quote-unquote core forest.
Yeah, I like that response. And I'm not seeing it here, so it's probably from another discussion. But I think we were also talking about possible need to add the definitions for wildlife, wildlife habitat, and riparian corridor.
Yeah, so my email is in, was in there. I forgot about that.
Yeah.
The SNRCC meets once a month. Their next meeting will be the second Wednesday in June.
And that would be one, if that's one where they end up having the definitions on the agenda, I would be inclined to try and make that one.
I think they could. So, and Gail has had a heads up. She won't be at that particular meeting, but Ron, Don Rundell would be chairing the meeting in her absence.
Okay.
Sounds like, well.
I think.
Sounds right.
Yeah.
Just know that's like last days of school, graduation, all kinds of craziness.
Yeah, right.
Well, different kid, different school. One on one day, one on the next.
To the Natural Resources Committee, as we discussed last time, and as I mentioned, I was concerned about our coming up with a new definition for core forest just in terms of not really understanding what the impact was on the town. Sort of what does that really mean in terms of how much we're taking away or how much we're adding, right? And I see the same thing with the steep slopes. It's like, it's not entirely clear to me if we shift the definition from 25% to 23%, what does that, what does that really mean? You know, does that mean that we're just giving up a lot of buildable area? Or does that mean we're conserving a lot more? I mean, what are the ramifications of these? And I'm very uncomfortable with sort of sitting around this table and saying, yes, it should be 23% without data to understand what the ramifications of that is.
Yeah, and that was one of my concerns around steep slope is the position that I take that I don't think is a secret, is that I just want to make sure that we're not, we're not. We put in regulations to protect certain things. But in the case of steep slopes, my position is more, what is it that we're trying to not allow to happen? And in that case, by restricting on steep slopes, it's erosion, water runoff, stormwater, all of that kind of thing. And I just, I feel like there are not, it may not be practical, but there are architectural techniques that can work with those features and accommodate those types of restrictions. And so I wouldn't want to restrict creativity. But at the same time, it's really important to have those protections in place. So it's more, what are the underlying causes? Don't attack the symptoms, attack, not attack, but don't address the symptoms, attract, address the source. And that's why I just had questions around it. And I'm happy to defer that to the Natural Resources Committee for now.
We don't have a steep slope for structure. At this point, we don't have anything that prohibits anybody from building on steep slopes.
Steep slopes is included in the list of sensitive areas, and that's followed by shall. It's just that, okay, if they shout, I'll avoid steep slopes. What, at what point does steep become steep? And just to get into.
Right.
So we don't have the number on that.
Right.
To Neil's point about, you know, understanding the impact of the change, there's plenty of mapping that can be done to slice and draw the line at a different point. And I was looking for, well, this is just an illustration of the slope maps that could be generated. Same thing for the forest maps, you know, showing the forest blocks without picking up the smaller ones. They can, we can do that. John can do that. And if the group would feel better about this if, sorry, if the group thought that it would be better for them to, you know, go to a certain point and then report back to the public hearing.
I'm sure they could do that. I don't think we want this.
Got it?
So anyway, there's a lot of mapping of information that could be used to help answer these questions. That's all I'm saying.
Right, and I'll admit, and I.
I would just, it's interesting to hear me, to hear you talk about what we're trying to do with this. Because just coming into the planning commission from the outside, it wasn't clear. it wasn't clear, that wasn't clear to me. Do you know what I mean? I mean, what, that, that, that goal of why we define steep slopes and why we regulate steep slopes, I don't know that that's articulated here, that like this is why we're doing it, which is just kind of interesting to me, because I'm like, oh, okay, well, now this stuff all makes a lot more sense. But that's not like written down anywhere, I don't think.
And I'll also call myself out, because I do feel like, as much as I've talked about this and thought about it, I still feel like I'm missing a key concept, and my allergy fog is not helping right now. But, um, yeah, some of the conversations that we've had, I feel like what my concern is may not actually be a concern. There are concerns around steep slopes. We do, we should have a definition, but the way it's used might not be the way it's embedded in my head right now. But I would like to see that discussion and make sure that we're addressing sources of problems, not just symptoms with our regulations.
The original ask from the Select Board at the time that they adopted the amendment was, hey, planning commission, we're going to adopt these changes, but they include phrases that don't have definitions, and we'd like you to define them. And steep slopes is one of them.
Right. And then if you look at steep slope definitions from other places, it can be very arbitrary. And that's to your point, how are we picking these numbers and for what reasons?
Dean, when did the Select Board adopt the
New regulations?
Those changes were adopted on February 12th, if I remember correctly.
Okay, of this year? Okay. So any other comments around definitions or anything? Or are we all okay with asking natural resources to weigh in?
Sounds like a good plan. I can't find the email Susan sent to, but Sean's has a good reply, but the only thing he mentioned about 75 acres was that it was kind of an attempt to look at the biggest blocks in town. But it was somewhat arbitrary, and it was, you know, that in his case, smaller blocks can be just as valuable. And he added, I mean, he sort of muddied it further by saying, you know, smaller sizes should also be considered, and shape should be considered, because as we talked about, a long, skinny piece of forest is less effective than something size. So he has a lot of backup data that he had supplied to Dean to come up with some of the forestry stuff. So I think it definitely would be worth diving deep with them. I mean, they're really, you've got great professional, you know, resources there.
And there was also mention that there are new maps that are coming out that can be a lot more that we can be leveraging.
Wouldn't it just be simplest to just tell the DRB to look at the map, the DRB and applicants to look at a map and see where the important, because otherwise, we're just describing things that may or may not be important. It's a one-size-fits-all approach, not based in any kind of real place.
Yeah, Jason and I talked about this a little bit, that one way to respond to this is to make reference to a map format.
Yeah.
And if the group is comfortable with the map, you can always refer to the map, people like that.
It just makes it simple, it's objective, and you can identify places of highest priority or most pristine or what have you. And then, you know, places where it's, you know, it's less significant.
The slope information is surprisingly good because it's being derived from the LIDARs. The thing, and so I don't think that I would have a problem recommending to the commission to make reference to a very detailed LIDAR-based slope map. Making reference to some of these other natural resource maps is maybe a little bit of a tougher sell, because the maps that Jen's shop made and that are distributed, they're very impressive, but there are mistakes. So if you refer to the map, you have to be confident, whatever the map is, that it's good, that it's accurate. And/or you include something that allows someone to have it reconsidered, get a waiver, or whatever you want to do, so that in the case where the map is just wrong, and you didn't notice it at the time, and we'll talk more about it later, there's a way to reconcile it by onsite investigation.
Well, one thing we do, which is very similar to what you've just described in Westford, is we have Water Resource Overlay District, and it's a map. And it shows where there are primary and secondary water resources and state wetlands and so on. And the data is derived from flyovers from the state. And it's, it's pretty, you know, it's not very sophisticated, it's not particularly accurate. But what it alerts an applicant to is that, hey, you've got a water resource on your property, and it's the applicant's burden to have that investigated and mapped and officially, you know, delineated in the case of wetlands, so that the buffer can be determined, and that can be used as a way to say, this is where development can't happen on the site. So it just, it's objective, straightforward, it's easy to administer, you know, and then we don't get into all of this bogged-down text.
Right, and that was something, the comment that was made about the maps that are coming, that are more, the land cover.
It's more detailed land cover information, so it's supposed to be done by the end of the summer.
And I understand the request from the Select Board, and it's great to have definitions sooner than later, but at the same time, I wouldn't want to put a lot of time into having definitions, and then we get a map that could be leveraged that takes away the need for a lot of that. So, yeah, we can, we'll see where natural resources goes with it, and we'll stay apprised.
Okay.
All right, unless there's anything else around definitions, we can get back into form-based zoning. And we've had this material a few times.
Yes.
It's soaking in.
I can include the material in your packet. I think you don't need to have me begrudgingly, I can give you a real quick overview, and then maybe you can have some interesting discussion. I know that there's some people here who may have some other things to add. But what I was going to mention with our form-based zoning, and you've seen this, is first, setting the stage for some of the newer members of the commission who are hearing about form-based zoning and don't have the background, I thought it would be useful, but just do a simple contrast between conventional zoning and form-based zoning. When you have just conventional zoning, people typically come in and they'll ask, what zoning district am I in? And then what uses are allowed in that district? And what's the density allowed? And do I have enough land in this spot? Can I get enough development? And then can I meet setback coverage, height, parking requirements, like that? With the form-based zoning that's been adopted in Shelburne, the series of questions is different. It's similar, but different. What character district am I in, instead of the zoning district? Because there are character districts, which are like smaller zoning districts. Then, instead of asking which uses are allowed, it's which building types are allowed in those character districts, or in that specific district or location. Then, instead of asking yourself the density, you ask yourself a question about building types, because Shelburne form-based zoning has a series of building types, and you choose to them like a menu in a restaurant. So does at least one of those building types work for the kind of project that I want to do? Maybe they do, maybe they don't. If they do, then you have to ask yourself, can I work with that building type and get, and all the different lot standards, and still have an economical development? So similar set of questions, but different, and sometimes we have to explain to people that they have a different flow from what they're normally experiencing when they look at our zoning. There are also some additional requirements having to do with stormwater and historic historic buildings, certain historic buildings. But if you preserve a historic building, you can get a density bonus. If you remove a historic building, then you lose the density incentive. So that's just really quick as a way of comparing traditional zoning with conventional, traditional zoning with form-based zoning for people that haven't been exposed to it. I've talked about this person in Maine, in Yarmouth, which is the community that we looked at before launching into things here. And I just wanted to signal out the full conclusions that I had after talking to her, because I think I see them here. Doing form-based zoning in a corridor is really tough. It's tougher than doing it in a center, I think. Although it may be easier to adopt it than it is to get it adopted in a village center, where the parcel is smaller and people are invested in the existing fabric than in a corridor.
Getting it right the first time is also very difficult in a corridor. People don't realize what it needs to have in it until they've started to use it. When the community sees applications or gets inquiries about the form-based code, they can really understand whether or not the standards are fitting. And one of the things that happened in this community in Maine after they adopted their regs is that they realized that a lot of the standards weren't necessary or they weren't right. They just have spent a lot of time going through each and every standard and asking themselves, do we need this standard, or is this number right? If we say 30% of something, is it really sensible to be 30%? Should it be 50? And so on. One of the things that they did in response to realizing that the numbers were not always right was to provide waivers, to be more generous with waivers. Now, one of the things that they learned politically is that because their code is like a lot of them, they don't require as many meetings with the DRB. That is thought to mean that you'll have a faster approval. In that community at least, there was a backlash when big projects were reviewed and approved administratively, and then they started to be built, and people wondered, where the heck did that come from? So the general observation is, is that people in the community may be willing to trade off the fast review if they feel like, and this is maybe getting a Dick's idea, if people come in and ask for waivers, that's a better approach. The people want the community to have an opportunity to hear someone ask for a waiver, and there should be a reasonable chance of getting that waiver. That's more important than just having a fast review, from the standpoint of the people in the community, not necessarily from the standpoint of the developer. First-time codes generally complex, and people have expectations that are too high. They think that people will understand them more readily than they do, and they think that they'll have more impact than they do, at least initially, because they, they think that it's going to be, you know, night and day, and it isn't. And then, like somewhat related to that earlier point, first-time codes will often have a internal committee essentially that passes judgment on projects, and the public isn't always comfortable with that. I wouldn't say that the overlay district that you've adopted, Shelburne has adopted, has as much of that as some other communities nearby. There have been some big projects that, again, aren't going to go to their boards, and could be approved entirely administratively. Shelburne's code is a little bit more of a hybrid. It still has a fair amount of DRB involvement, because things are conditional uses. Anyway, I wanted to run through that. I don't know that there'll be questions about it. I wanted to just hit on the material that I had passed out a couple of meetings with this idea of form-based zoning light. I wanted people to know that Shelburne's not the only place that thought about doing form-based zoning as an overlay. Community in Washington that I'm familiar with, parts of Cleveland did things as an overlay. The difference was that they didn't do it as an opt-in like we've done it. But the idea of using an overlay as a kind of way to ease into form-based zoning is not all that unusual. Hybrid codes are something that communities do, where they will use the districts in conventional zoning to set what uses are allowed and to set the height restrictions. But then they'll start pulling into their regs, the street types. Now, the Shelburne overlay, form-based overlay uses street types. And then, after using street types to figure the frontage standards, we use design guidelines. So it's a combination of design review, traditional zoning, and street types from form-based zoning. So hybrid codes, some people around Vermont will say, people in Vermont and others will say, almost every form-based code is a hybrid code. But just in terms of helping you understand the different ways communities dip their toes into this, I'm mentioning this, I'm hoping that you had a chance to look at some of the materials that were in the packet. And then there was the article from Randall Arant, who highlights some codes that, at least one of them, Simsbury, was part of the package that the planning commissioners who worked on this code were looking at. And Randall Arant's big message as far as trying to take the core of form-based zoning and put it in traditional zoning is set minimum building heights, not maximum, minimum, and set maximum front yard setbacks. Not everywhere necessarily, but in centers and along the important corridors. But make sure that you allow for articulation. So, you know, if there was some sense that you needed to move forward with elements of form-based zoning in the traditional regs, that's a one-way, at least, that you could consider doing it. In the past, the planning commission has heard some case studies involving three properties, one on the north end of Route 7, where a 10,000-square-foot building was approved under form-based zoning, two 5,000-square-foot stories. It's going to have, I think, six or eight apartments in it, which would never have happened under traditional zoning, and it's going to have a business on the ground floor. That's the one major form-based zoning success. 93 Webster Road, that's the project that started and then really died on the vine because of the requirement in the form-based zoning for this parallel road to Route 7. And that's something that, bless you, Brandy Saxton's amendments would address by simplifying the map. But right now, the regulating plan, the map, has that road in it, and it made it very difficult for at least one project. 4253 is another property where we've had discussions with the property owner. They were initially interested in form-based zoning, have walked away from it some, and now maybe coming back to use form-based zoning. But they were concerned about some things like
Where is that?
That's the, that is near the, it's across from, from the Rice area. It's, I'm just trying to think, just north of the, it's a little elderly housing project on the right, south of Long Meadow. I'll show it to you on a map.
Where the Roberts' house was?
Sorry?
Where the Roberts', Roberts' house, where they ran parallel to the campground.
When you describe, when you describe that, you're describing
The 4253, the one where they, this is the one that I'm just kind of having a break.
It's just north of where Webster Road hooks in.
Right. Yeah, not
By the church.
It's, it's north of the Dutch Mill, but not very much further north, on the east side. So anyways, a recap, we've had case studies, and part of the message of those case studies is that it's worked for one project. It's been problematic for one that the property owner was, went as far as investing in application, then came to meetings, and then they stopped. Nothing has happened. But there is some growing interest, I would say, and we have recently received an application for a project that will put three form-based buildings on the Yankee Doodle property. And that will, that will be reviewed for some very narrow issues by the DRB in one of their meetings in the next month or so. And that's three buildings with a lot of the units being age-restricted, 24 units in two, and then because they've maxed out zoning, I think it's another 12 or 13 in the third building. So it's having that, it's having the kind of impact that people have been wanting it to have, at least as far as promoting additional development. That would be many more units than that lot would allow under conventional, which I think is about a dozen.
Those rentals.
Sorry? There would be rentals.
The two 5,000-square-foot properties?
It's a, it's a single building, two floors. It's a 10,000-square-foot total.
I see.
That one is, I was relying on my maps here.
Is two floors the cap?
Uh, no, it was Yeah. The, I'm sorry, Dick, what was your?
Is two floors the limit for the
No, that was just, that was the, basically built out his lot. Actually, I should show you the plans. But realizing that I'm taking more time here just recapping material that you've had in your packets before, were there questions about the materials that were in? Because Tyler's here, because he is working with someone who is looking at form-based zoning, but I think is also wondering about some things that maybe they would see as possible changes. Like I said, with one of these others, the issue was the limit of 24 units, or at least one potential issue for them, was the limit on 24 units in a single building. For this project, I would let him speak.
Yeah, I would love to hear that as well. A comment, though, just considering the materials and particularly the Yarmouth A comment though, just considering the materials and particularly the Yarmouth feedback and examples in that case study, it seems like as far as a path forward, it would make a lot of sense to define or have some pilot projects with developers that might be willing to work with us a little bit to help us form some of the, or help us bring light to some of these gray areas that are pretty strict. And as far as what that looks like, I don't know if that would make more sense to, to have a, like, we had those three projects as case studies, to have a pilot project as a case study where we can discuss it and figure, okay, how can we, how can we look at what's trying to be accomplished and make sure that the form-based zoning rules will accommodate that and future projects like it? Or if it's something where we make sure that we add a waiver process similar to what happened in Yarmouth and make sure that there's flexibility through waivers to accomplish the things that you wouldn't be able to get just based on whatever the, the form-based zoning rules are that are currently in front of us. Seems to me it would be one of those two paths. I don't know if there's a preference from a administrative or optics viewpoint.
Well, when the project was first put together, there was this hope that the development of the code could include a pilot project of some sort. That didn't come to fruition as far as actually doing it now that you have a code in place. I'm not, I don't really yet have a recommendation on the mechanics for that, but I think the idea is that it would give useful feedback to the planning commission.
Right, I would just want it to be done in a way that's not wasting anybody's time. It wouldn't be, it's not like using a customer as a guinea pig to say, all right, well, we're gonna, we're gonna use your case study to define what our rules are and then, sorry, it doesn't apply to you. Like, that, that kind of thing. I'd, I'd like to see, it seems like it would be more in good faith to have discussions to say, hey, here's, here's an actual project that there's interest in, in implementing. Here's why it would work and why it might not work, given our form-based zoning rules, and using that to either tweak the rules that we're gonna come out with or have that waiver process to be able to provide the flexibility if that's warranted. And, and I honestly, I don't, I don't know if there's a preferred path there, but it strikes me that moving forward with some kind of tangible thing, especially in light of the Yarmouth information in that article, that that would be very helpful.
So, the blue circle is showing the location at the corner of Clearwater and Route Seven where this project that I referred to, this is the one approved form-based zoning project that was completed. And the Webster Road project that was basically stalled as the Baldwin property, this is the, just south of the Jug Handle. And the elderly housing project that I was trying to refer, trying to remember is, is this one here. And the property in question has been called DeAndrus Property. It's right here, but stepping back.
And that's with the entrance issue, right?
There, I, I think one of the, one of the issues for this property, and it's something that I didn't really touch on today, is they have a structure that has five units in it and they'd like to keep it if they can. It's just that the form-based zoning overlay as it was written doesn't really make clear an easy path to gaining approval for a combined form-based zoning, non-form-based zoning project. The thing that we end up telling people is, well, you could keep your life simpler if you subdivided the parcel and did your form-based zoning on the other piece. But that has its own issues. So, the form, the amendments that Brandy has put together does include language that makes it clearer how you deal with these combined projects. So, I think that the, the questions about the process will possibly have concerns and then one of the issues may have also been this limit on size for multi-family.
Well, and to put it out there, as far as moving forward with form-based zoning, I do think, as has been mentioned before, that we should take the, we should take a look at the changes that Brandy spent time on, having those amendments that clarified certain things and I, I think that's something that we should move forward with as a first step. Bigger picture for context, we, we know that there's a, there's an economic development initiative that the select board is gonna be driving. We've talked about in the corridor having, I keep calling them nodes, I don't know if centers is, is the term that's more widely used, that can also incorporate stormwater considerations and that sort of thing. But when I was looking down the, looking at the takeaways around Yarmouth, if we define nodes or centers that we do want to focus on, and some of this can come out of that economic development session, I mean, that, that's gonna involve talking with property owners, developers, where's the will? Because if, if a place that we say, hey, it would be really nice to have a center in this spot, and the property owners say, well, we're never doing that, then that's not a good place to have a center or practical. But if we can, if we can get through that process, identify those areas, have pilot projects that we can be flexible with enough to learn from each other, to understand either how we want to continue to modify our form-based zoning or building in a waiver process like Yarmouth did in order to accommodate those types of things, that that would be helpful. And then, that would require spending time defining that waiver framework.
There are already provisions for waivers, it's just that they're, they're constrained and I think this is the same problem that they had.
And theirs was opening it up, right?
They, they made the allowance larger if a waiver was granted. There was, the project that I was referring to that has just had an application filed for the three buildings for the fifty-eight or whatever units, that is in the green corridor character district. And one of the features of the regulating plan is that it has the build-to line and the build-to zone and reasons I'm struggling to remember, the green corridor actually has the largest setback, it's a hundred feet. And with that restriction on their property, they were, things were getting tight. They could seek a waiver, but the maximum waiver they could get was ten feet or ten percent. So, they could go from a ninety, I'm sorry, from a one hundred to a ninety to give themselves a little bit more room. If the waiver was twice that or three times that, then you could be looking at the difference between a hundred and...
Which side of the road was that?
It's on, this is the former Yankee Doodle, it's, it's on the west side.
Yeah, that seems...
What if they were just allowed to go up a floor?
Sorry?
If they were just allowed to go up a floor?
If they were, well, those are, the buildings that are, that are, the subject of that application are multi-story buildings, so, so they can, I mean, I, there have been discussions in the past about increasing the maximum height and there was material that was in a packet a while ago about if you were to go to four or five floors. So, that's another variable that you guys...
So, you have to go that high?
Well, just whatever your building types have height limits, I believe that some of them go to four, that's another mechanism that you could work with.
Farrell, Farrell Drive has, I think they're three and four stories and they have under, the first floor is garages, which helps a lot. And if you go up the road a little bit, just into South Burlington, there's a lighting store, I think that's a three-story with a drive under garage as well.
Well, the form-based zoning allows that type of parking and it, it is actually a component of those units that I'm talking about. The vast majority of the parking will be underneath, will be in the buildings.
What was the thinking behind a hundred-foot setback in the green area, out of curiosity?
Like I said, I'm, I'm struggling to remember the thinking of it. It is...
Kind of the entrance into the village?
Well, not so much the entrance is that this is the area that has the greatest natural sensitivity. This is floodplains and wetland. Monroe Brook is coming through and then crosses and goes through.
Yeah, but it's not on the other side of Route Seven.
But not on, not on the other side. So, you know, maybe one response is that, oh geez, then don't put it on the west side. But it, it was applied on that character district basis.
I think, I think it makes more sense to have the protections in the places where the actual resource is, but not, not if the actual resource is not there. I mean, I don't see the point of having symmetry in an auto-oriented corridor.
Yeah. The only other thing I was just gonna say, and maybe Tyler speak, is that at some point, I would like some clarification from, from someone about this idea of centers because your regulations currently have, in addition to these character districts, which essentially are zones, they have these frontage zones, so these red areas that are there to try to create centers. So, if, if there's thinking about centers that are different from what's here, then what do we do with these? That's one question. And then the other thing I'll mention about this, and maybe Tyler will be touching on this, I'm not sure, the thinking of those centers is that they would be more centry and you'd have the buildings with multiple stories and active ground floor uses. So, the requirements for those areas that are fronted by those red crosses is for active ground floor uses. And I know that there's been some preliminary discussion about whether or not you continue with that requirement.
Yeah, and I, actually, I didn't intend to ignore that. I guess looking at it from a, I, I understand that the, the process of defining form-based zoning and the studies and what is best for the corridor resulted in, here's, here's the ideal characteristic layout, here's the ideal where centers could be based on all of the other factors. But I'm assuming what wasn't factored in is what's currently there, who owns the land, who's willing to do anything on it? And if they aren't willing to do anything on it, it doesn't matter what color it is, nothing's ever gonna happen. So, I'm, I'm trying to look at this through the lens of what's actually feasible, what, what's something that's realistic that could be done and spend our time there. Cause otherwise, we could spin our wheels coming up with rules for, that are never gonna get touched.
Part of this too was...
Right, right, yeah, I'm, I am curious to not hear myself talk anymore.
You know, we were pretty clear, this was not something that was going to work in two years or three years.
It was a fifty-year...
It's a long...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Project, so...
The next owner might be...
Twink, yeah. Or wherever we can.
Yeah, and I'm not saying to ignore those, but to me, the, like, that economic development activity would involve working with, or talking with those parties and getting some real feedback in what's feasible. And it could be somebody that says, you know, yeah, I never plan on, on selling and then there could be a, let's get the neighbors together and we're all gonna talk and see what's best for the community. No telling where that would be.
And maybe that's the termination of the comment that I guess the Yarmouth person had was to limit the number of centers, to not try to do too many centers along the way. Maybe that's the limitation that says, okay, the person who's willing to develop their spot, their piece of land as a center and others don't, they're the ones that become the center, but the other ones don't? I mean, that's letting market forces prevail to, you know, to determine which one of those things is actually gonna be a center.
Yeah, and, and it is important to keep in mind that this is long-term planning and even in the article that was in there, I think the Dover example, they had four buildings approved and implemented under form-based zoning in six years or something. So, it's, I, I wouldn't anticipate it to be an overnight thing, but I think it would also start to gain more momentum if we had some projects that were tangible that we could work with and it shows, hey, this is possible, here's what we can, here's where the longer vision goes to encourage other people to recognize, oh, okay, that looks nice, we could do that.
So, that would mean incorporating the, the ones that have been done, like the one that Dean mentioned that's up across from modern design? That would, put, put it in a book and say, here's an example or send it out or put it online or whatever?
Yeah, and I, I don't know, I, I don't know where the economic development initiative will go, but my understanding of those processes is that you, you work with the various stakeholders and might put together concepts to be discussed publicly or at least amongst those stakeholders to see if there's enough support to do it. Cause, I mean, I'm, I'm not saying that we should take out those red areas cause they were defined for reasons, but I also wanna be realistic about what's possible.
Yeah. Kate, when, when this all was formulated, was, were the, the individual property owners brought in to, you know, to discuss what would happen potentially to their land? I know that there was a big undertaking that was done and that you guys did and...
We, I mean, we did, we did a lot of...
That would be another thing to throw on top of the pile that you already had to do.
But, you know, I think, you know, there, there were people who were, you know, told us they had no idea that this had happened, you know, so, I mean, it...
We did a quite a number of property owner interviews and we looked at key people. We had Ernie Pomelo come and take part in meetings and we had Larry Williams, I believe. And so, it wasn't possible to...
Brian Proucor, I mean, all, you know, John DeBrul, you know, all of the, the many people, and then many, many people from the neighborhoods came in too. And then the guy who used to own the furniture store, Ethan Allen, he was...
Oh, Mike Lash.
Yeah, he was here and, I mean, this is a long time ago, I, I can't remember exactly, but the, the people did provide a lot of input. So, one of the, one of the things that happened, this, this took really long time to just move through the process of, you know, as, as it happens. The, the, almost as soon as the plan was approved, you know, retail was changing tremendously in that period of time. So, we, we sort of approved something that was kind of, you know, dead on arrival in terms of a commercial, commercially viable thing. I mean, if you see what's going on in Burlington at that new apartment complex that's on the corner of Pine and, I can't, yeah, Flynn. I, I mean, that, that is, is, has been unrentable, you know, the commercial space and, I mean, probably some, you know, more complicated, complex reasons for that, but if they, but they have location in a big way over us, you know, and if they can't do it, then I don't see why, you know, we, we can't. And so, we have unfortunately baked into our code is a requirement for active retail uses on the first floor. So, that's like one of the huge things that needs to be modified right away, some more flexibility. So, I think we did not anticipate that there would be, at the time, as much interest in housing on Route Seven as there is. I mean, we've since had kinda, you know, shifts in the, with housing crisis, I mean, there've been some, you know, shifts in just societally that have made Route Seven more plausible as a place for housing for more people. So, you know, the, the code that we have is not really reflective of current demand.
It is interesting, I mean, the retail thing, they shift.
As far as the smaller retail, if, if all of a sudden one building, one property has sixty units in it, then those people need to get a cup of coffee or whatever without wanting, you know, without driving the car. If there are so many people living in one area, then all of a sudden, that first floor retail will be important and so maybe we shouldn't scrap that so quickly.
Well, I think one thing we could do is be more flexible about what we mean by that. Because one, one of the things that I got feedback from at the Vermont Development Conference is that, you know, you look at traditional little tiny stores in traditional downtowns and they're very, they're very, very small, they're little hole-in-the-wall places. And, you know, we're, I think we need to be more flexible about how we understand what that looks like.
I think what happened on Pine Street was Arts Riot in that neighborhood just exploded in the last three years. They've, you know, they, you can only grow so much, I think.
Well, yeah, let's, let's hear from a, this example and see where that leads us.
Scotten Partners Architects, and we've been retained by J.L. Dava, Jeff Davis, by the Pecors via Jeff Davis. Pecors owned this property, and that is this property right here, which recently had a boundary adjustment to clarify the boundaries between that lot where the bowling alley is and the mobile home park that surrounds it. Apparently, unbeknownst to some people, the boundaries went through mobile homes and all sorts of things. So recently, it had been adjusted so it remained as the same-sized lot, but sort of a give-and-take occurred. So currently, there is this building, as you well know, and the lot, one of the characteristics of the lot that's a challenge is that it drops like a rock right off the, to the west here, about 15 to 16 feet, which creates a series of challenges for us. But in regards to the Form-Based Code, what, what we were asked to look at was an affordable housing project here. So the Pecors would work with Champlain Housing Trust and would like to put an affordable housing project here. However, there are a couple things about this lot that are unique to this lot, and I'm not sure how unique it is, but we're right across the street from Martindale. And understandably, and I think we all understand the logic of this and don't disagree with the idea of putting an entrance in the center across from that, because there's a light there, so we should. And there's not, there's not a question about that. I mean, it'd be foolish not to. However, I think that one of the things it does is divide this frontage up into two very small, essentially almost unusable in the sense of that commercial space on, on a, on a, on a project. So the build-to-zone area, I'm not sure how you move this then forward.
Should be able to just, page?
Oh, page, I understand, all right. Page down. Okay, so we've looked at a few options here in regards to trying to meet the intent of the Form-Based Code. And the Form-Based Code is, is, we like the idea of it because it gives us 33 units, I believe, as opposed to 19 units, which traditional zoning would allow. So there's a real motivation to try to work with it, of course, but there's a few things about it that are creating some issues. And one of them is try, this lot is, is effectively split, do you see, by that access point. And so what we end up with, and there's different options I can show you, is if we bring the building that far forward, one, it's not a great situation for housing, frankly, because it's right on Shelburne Road and it's noisy, and this is, I mean, Champlain Housing Trust would, would love to not have it there, from their experience. And we've done, I have no idea how many projects we've done for them, but the sound is an issue and the noise is. And the idea that having ground floor commercial space is not something that Champlain Housing Trust wants to try to lease. You know, they, it's two small little spaces, they're not in the business of leasing commercial space, and it's just not something that works for them. But I don't think, even if it weren't them as the developer, I'm not sure that two small spaces like that would be particularly useful. Now, to Steve's point, you know, if you, if you got to be a much bigger operation, maybe, but at this point, it's gonna be, I mean, Jeff Davis, who's an experienced landlord, is saying, you're just gonna see those spaces empty for a long, long time, because cars go by there fast enough, and they're not looking for a small, little coffee shop at that point. How many square feet, yeah? Well, that's a great question. The, basically, you're ending up with like 1,500, 2,000 square feet at the most for these ground floor units. So they're really, they're, they're quite small, is the problem. So, and, and the other issue we have is trying then to get parking for those retail units, or any unit, frankly, but retail units, if they're separate units here and here, we're sloping down suddenly and we're having to park back here and somehow gain handicap access up to these units here if we're required to build in that zone. Which on a lot that drops the way ours does, it's a very difficult challenge, because essentially you have two separate tenants in a building. And so if, if, if this build, if this active ground floor is required to be essentially a separate tenant, then we, we can't, we can't achieve handicap accessibility except via a back door, which is never the intent of the ADA requirements. And I'm gonna mention one other item you have in your code, which is the ground floor has to be two feet above grade, which is, I have to say, a little beyond comprehension when it comes to thinking about the ADA requirements. What you're saying is that you automatically are building 24 feet of ramp to get from grade. If this were a dead level site, you would have to build 24 feet of ramp just to get to the first floor. And I know that it's based on the old historic image of a building that sits a couple of feet above grade, but it's, we are bound by the ADA, which beats any zoning regs hands down. So we can't, we can argue with you, we can't argue with the Department of Justice. So my point is, is that that idea of having a ground floor as two feet above grade is gonna create a series of ramps all the way along there, if you want. And it's, I, I'm not sure quite why you have it in there, except from some historic image, which, you know, I appreciate, but it's probably not what you really want if you want a commercial space there. So...
I don't think we even knew it was there. Did you, Kate?
Uh, no.
So, yeah, on table 147, it's, it's right there, so.
I believe you.
Okay. I'm only saying that because it further exacerbates the situation in this case, because of a lot like this drops so far, there's no way we could, there's, there's really no way we can build a building that's attached to incorporate an, an active ground floor use with housing and incorporate then parking that makes any sense for it. You see what I'm saying? So, if I go to, let me go back up here. I'm sorry, this is not... So another option we looked at was to say, well, maybe we just try it on one side, and we still end up with some of the same situations, but it does, it, it separates the two buildings, which is fine. I mean, the, the idea of having two buildings is not the, the biggest issue we have. We have a limit of 24 units by Form-Based Code in one building. That's not a huge issue to us. It puts us like 23 units and 10 units or something like that. But again, it, it forces one of the buildings to be right on Shelburne Road and the same ground, active ground floor use issue. So that's still a significant challenge to, to make it work. So, anyway, that's just one other option here that we looked at. So what, another possibility might be that, saying that, listen, if we dedicate that front area as a pocket park within this, landscape it. In this case, because there's no building there, we can create some parking just for that area up here, you see, and create some parking around here. Most of the parking is back away from here. Landscape this and create some sort of park, park here, obviously, we didn't delineate the whole thing, we didn't show a landscaping plan, but my point is, is that it could, it could certainly be provided. And then put the buildings back here where they're, it's quieter and they're strictly housing, and, well, life is a little bit better, frankly, as housing. It's a better housing project. So that's another option, and I'm not sure if I have another one on here or not. This is another one where if, again, we pulled the building back just a little bit, that would still help us sound-wise quite a bit. And yet you'd have some sense of addressing Shelburne Road, but we would, again, create some landscaped areas here. The public could come in, they could park here, they could use this area. Most of our parking is back here and underneath the building. So some of these areas in here are extra, basically for if, if the public wanted to use these parks or their guests or whatever, that would be a possibility. So that's just another way that we might propose to look at this. It does not comply, in a sense, with your regulations in that way, but it does provide for a nice project. The one other item I did wanna talk to you all about is that what is considered a primary building is, is your regulations are, are fine for that, aside from the two-foot issue, but the accessory buildings have a limit of 20 feet in height, which I don't follow, because that means that we can't really get two stories in here.
You're gonna jump in again, because as was explained in the meeting, it, I think your interpretation of that second building having to be considered accessory is wrong. There's, that's not the interpretation of anybody in this building.
Oh, okay. Well, that's great, because that would...
And as we explained at the meeting, it's a separate building, it's not, it meets the building type, it has the building type height allowances.
Okay, then that's great, then we can happily put that one aside. So, anyway, this is, so you see our dilemma that we're running into. It has to do with both the point of access to this, the idea that housing and, and retail sometimes can work, but in our, in this situation, because the retail ends up being quite small and broken into two small parts, it's very difficult. And you're also going, we'd have to find a, a builder that wants to incorporate retail and housing. In this case, with affordable housing, typically, someone like Champlain Housing Trust, Housing Rock, they don't want to, they don't want anything to do with it. It just creates, it's a problem for them, because of the way their funding is, because just the way they work. But, so, anyway, this is where we're at, and...
What other access options have you explored, I mean, or...
We, we, we don't have any, because I doubt that, that AOT would allow us to access Shelburne Road anywhere but on that, at that light. And this also, this one was also developed with the idea that if, for some reason, it was required by AOT, that we provide access from the mobile home park to here and into here, that could be done that way, but we prefer to not, not do that. So, but we, I, I...
The bowling alley, bowling alley properties?
There, and there's a light, and that's why it's existing.
Yeah. And, you know, we're not arguing with that, you know, we think, I mean, there's a logic to not having a, I mean, there's nothing we're irritating to anybody than having a light than having a street just down from it. I mean, it's crazy, it just creates problems.
Bowling alley building is currently back where it looks like you have a pond?
We, we're, we would, it's a stormwater, a pond that we're assuming we would need.
Right.
So...
The existing conditions are in his first picture, so if you wanted to go back.
Yeah, so do you wanna go back to the existing? Would that be helpful?
So is there a favorite?
I think probably the one you're, probably the one you're looking at there is, would make the most sense to us, it would allow us to park underneath the, the west, easternmost building, which reduces our lot coverage.
Would you build a single building if you could, if the, the restriction wasn't in place on the size?
Sure. Yeah, that would be less expensive, we'd have a less envelope, be more energy efficient.
But in terms of laying out?
Height, height be more of an advantage than with a 36-unit building and three floors?
You know, that's, that's a good question, it probably would, probably would be, and one of the things that you might wanna consider is that on lots the slope like this, adding a floor further back doesn't have much of an impact on its, on the street, because the building, we're back, we're back a full floor by the time we get to here. You know, we're down 10 feet there, 11 feet, 12 feet, whatever. So, you know, reality is, is that you're not gonna perceive it as being all that much higher, even if it's three floors, because it's already set that far back. So there are some things about topography that are tough to, tough to put into your regulations. I appreciate that, having been on a planning commission and tried to write regulations, but that is something you might wanna think about. It's, and, and there's, I don't know how many lots are like this along Shelburne Road, I know this is one area where it just drops right off, but that is something... You're not, we're not building anything in the build-to-zone district at all.
Too far back.
Just too far back, that's, that's the one thing that doesn't comply?
That's right, that's right. Yeah, and we could, like I say, we can make the two buildings scenario work, would it be less, less expensive and, like I say, probably a bit more energy efficient to have one building? Yes, because we could combine mechanical systems, we'd have less envelope and what have you. When we could, we would probably step it down in some ways, but, you know, it's not, it's not an incredible hardship in this particular case. That's, that's probably the least of our concerns.
What if you, like, did the same thing as one building, but just split them into two buildings and, and stepped them down, but have one, like, I'm just thinking, I mean, I don't wanna design a project for you.
No, that's all right. I think, what you're saying, if you turned it the other way...
Yeah, if you turned it...
That's what I'm saying, we would probably, we would probably break it, you see, and step it.
Yeah.
Yeah, we would...
So if, if you were, as you're saying, step it down, or, or you would have, like, more stories toward the back...
Yeah.
Couldn't you pull, like, the, the east end of it close to the building to, to be in that, in that setback zone? And, but still spread it out like you would be doing one building?
You could, we're just, we try to, we're trying to just keep the noise factor down on this, because that's an issue to units being there. But you could have a narrow end here, certainly, and build down here, you would step it down. We like going parallel to the topography, only in the sense that it's, it's easier to park underneath the building, which reduces our lot coverage, because, you know, you come in and then you park that way. So it works better in that manner. Most of these buildings that, almost all of our housing buildings, we designed 62 feet wide, because that allows parking underneath walls done. And we've done so many of these, we know exactly how to design them, but 62 feet wide is perfect for underground parking. And from a topography point of view, you're on the same level if you, if you run your axis in this direction, parallel to the topography, your parking is, in buildings, are constantly dropping, which makes the cut and fill a little bit more challenging as, as you go perpendicular to the topography, in a sense. So, that's the one reason we, we would probably prefer not to do it. So in this case, oddly enough, having the two buildings isn't a, is not a huge issue to us, because we would probably drop this and then we can get down into here and just set this one down. set this one down at a lower level and not park underneath it. So, this would be lower, um, and this would be, uh, up a little bit. And, uh, probably even with the grade up at this level here, so that that would be the case. But we'd be able to plant some and, and attenuate the sound a bit more and this would, so... I mean, I think there's some, I appreciate your intent absolutely about this. This is an odd location also for that sense of developing the four corners, because this lot just to the north of us is that housing that is built way back. I forget what the, I don't know what the name of the development is.
Chauvin Bay.
Chauvin Bay, but the driveway goes all the way to hell and back.
Used to be a drive-in.
What's that?
It was a drive-in back there.
Yeah. So, there is, you know, basically, you know, if this lot were much wider, you know, then you could actually create some sense of density here and a sense of place here. But you see, that's where we're caught too, because from the center line of, of the driveway in the, in the intersection here, it's not that far from here to here, nor from here to here. So, you don't have a lot of opportunity to create anything in that, in that sense. So, that particular intersection is probably not, well, at least on the west side, maybe on the, on, you know, on the east side, I don't know. Uh, that's a different story, and that, I think, some of those buildings could certainly be redone there, but probably will over time. So, and it's, and it's relatively level there, so...
So, if you had to pick, uh, like, an order of things that, that you would like to have changed in the form-based zoning, what, what would you, what would you list?
I would say that if the, if it is a housing project, um, I would make an exception to requiring it to be built within the build-to-zone area. I would also drop that requirement that it needs to be two feet above the grade, because I think that in general is gonna create havoc. Um, and, uh, you know, honestly, other than that, we didn't find a lot, but those are real showstoppers for us on this particular project. And I think that...
The unit limit too? The twenty-four in one building?
That would, I mean, I think for some projects and that, I think giving an option would be good.
Right.
Because, like I say, it's not, it's not killing us on this one. But it's, uh, I can see where somebody would like it. But honestly, we, we need to get back, the way that this lot is configured, we need to get around the end of this building, anyway. So, could we make this building a little bit longer and do this? Yeah, we could. Uh, and maybe if we went up another floor, maybe we create one building there. So, there might be some options there for making it even more efficient. Uh, and then I would be careful about what you define as grade if you do, because in a lot like this, what is your, what's your mean grade starting point there? How would you say, is it three stories from this side or this side? That would be something that you might want to think about as you, as you write that. It would be, you know, the grade that is, uh, I don't know, how you define it, closest to the mean grade of the highway or something like this?
Tyler, um, Tina and I were just talking...
I think it's, I think it's midpoint of high and low is the starting point, but I'll double check. The, um, the thing that, as I mentioned earlier, Tyler and I had, had talked with, with others on his team, um, this provides opportunities and also challenges, because, um, it forces you to ask yourselves just how important certain things that are very central to the form-based zoning code really are. Um, you know, because I think some developers would say, really, what I would like the most is give me the density without the form-based zoning requirements. Because I would, I would guess that Champlain Housing Trust is interested in this parcel and interested in form-based zoning because of the number of lots they, the number of units that they can do. And I think most developers, and that's central to this idea, but the quid pro quo for form-based zoning was, you'll get those units if you build the way the town says we think you should build. And the question for the planning commission is, is it really how you think the town should, how things should be built? And it may take a little while to figure out the answer.
Well, maybe there's some trade-offs too. You know, when you get a lot like this, where you're, it's not that wide of a lot, you're entering right down the middle of it. You know, if there's some options there, because it just doesn't make it feasible to build all the way up in the front, because we enter right in the middle of it. Um, what, what are your waivers, what are your options there in that case? You know, 'cause we have to come in, we have to get around, we have to get to the back and park there. Um, and, you know, it's just, if, if the entry to this lot were down at one end, well, our story would be a little bit different, but it's not. And it's, and it, and yet it makes absolute sense from an overall traffic and control and everything to, to enter right smack in the middle of it. It's just the way the lot is.
Do you think AOT is gonna make you...
Go in at that intersection?
I can't imagine them not.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And we're not arguing about that. We're, I mean, I, like I say, I've been doing this long enough, I think that common sense would say, put your entry at a light, you know?
Question about your, the, the drawing there, is you sort of go down the grade in the parking, so you come around the building, you've got, here it looks like kind of horizontal hatching, is that showing that there's a ramp? Like, is it, that little parking lot at the end of the building, is that a flat lot or is that also ramping it?
Wait, here?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, that's just a crosswalk.
Crosswalk?
Yeah.
But is that, so the parking lot to the right of what you just showed, the one that's got...
This is at a slope.
Okay, so that is sloping?
This is sloping down. This is probably sloping towards that direction anyway for sheet flow, for stormwater.
Right.
And then this is probably, we would probably grade this level into here. So, this would be a retaining wall around these three sides, basically, of the building. That's what you'd have to do it.
Yeah, okay.
And we're hoping that hell, there's no ledge there.
Is that a requirement that...
Um, with the form-based zoning, that a certain percentage of the building has to be at that?
That's another aspect of, so like Tyler says, the build-to-zone, it's really the, it's, it's the distance and then it's the amount of the build-to-zone that's occupied the building that are issues here.
Seventy-five percent.
Seventy-five percent?
Yes.
Okay, so it can't be just that you have your sixty-two foot of width on that build-to-zone?
Right.
And then the rest of it goes back?
Because it's designed to create that sense of enclosure, that, you know, you wouldn't want to just have the little hand up near the street, it's the presence of the building in the street. So, yes, there are, it's, it's more than just essentially the minimum setback. It's the amount of the building that's occupying that area.
And, and this gets to that idea, that this is in this, one of these frontage zones where it's anticipated that you're gonna have retail uses and then housing above. So, being that close to the road is, you know, if, if, if you imagine that, you know, that new building up in South Burlington is a good example, you know, it's not so awful if you're gonna be above things. But in, in, when it's housing only, which was not anticipated in this setting, um, it's, you know, I, I appreciate your, the challenges that you're, you've, you've been highlighting.
Yeah, and I, I mean, obviously, there's housing above retail and, and urban areas, I think it's, in this case, it's just a, it's a, it's a challenge from, the noise is always an issue, but also...
Well, and it's the perfect place for housing of that type anyway, because you have a market across the street.
Right.
You know, which I'm sure was...
Yeah.
You know, something that you're trying to leverage.
Yeah.
Does one story make a big difference in the street noise? So, would the second-story apartments not have the problem closer up? Just for knowledge?
One story wouldn't make a huge difference. Uh, oddly enough, I mean, most of the noise generated by cars comes from the tires hitting the road. That's the, it's not the engines, unless somebody's air braking. It's, it's really not, it's, it's the cars, it's, it's the tires hitting the, the road and it just, it just sends it right over there, so...
So, height does make a difference?
Height, I don't think height makes a huge difference. I mean, it makes some difference, but not a huge amount. But in our case, that would, because of our access now, we would, to build on both sides, if we were required to build, the build-to-zone here and here, I, I don't know quite how we'd make that work very well.
And that's part of the reason I asked the question of you about where the, where should the centers be? I mean, the thinking originally was those areas that were identified as the frontage zones.
Yeah, and I, and this is effectively where the rubber meets the road, and, um, if, like, in this case, this is a project that would make sense for that space, I, I don't know. I mean, you can make arguments that, yeah, if the things on either side developed in a certain way, then it could create a certain character, but at the same time, being able to accommodate this, being able to have it set back a little bit more, having a pocket park with parking would, we talk about sense of place and that sort of thing, and to me, that would have a better feel based on these different scenarios than having a building right, having two buildings splitting the, the entranceway there. But from a, from an implementation perspective, that's where it's, that wouldn't, that wouldn't be satisfied by a waiver of up to a certain percentage unless you're talking like a hundred percent here. So...
Yeah. Just make the changes based on it being residential?
Right, we just re, re, re-character.
It doesn't create problems on other lots that might be commercial.
What was it you said, Dick, too?
Just basic on being residential, create a different set of standards for...
It, it does, but say this word, a residential project, if this were a commercial project, having the entrance right there and then also trying to build up to here would be a real challenge. You know what I'm saying?
So, this site, either, irregardless, is gonna be tough.
It's a tough one.
Drive through the building and punch?
Right. Yeah, I was thinking about that, there's one of those.
But we also drop so fast, that by the time you get down through there, you're down at least half to three-quarters of a floor, and then you're trying to figure out, so how am we gonna park, get back up to that level?
Right.
And then access it, and you're, you've turned your building around and then, so somebody would say, this is not worth it.
Yeah, I mean, you'd have to have, to your point, park underneath, you'd have to have an, almost an elevator for ADA or, you know...
Right, and that's okay for housing, and I'm okay for retail. Nobody in retail's gonna want to go through that hassle to get to a store when there's probably another store just like it that has a whole lot better access.
Yeah.
So, this site in itself has some anomalies that, that because of its drive, its topography create, regardless of the use. But I will say that housing being required to then have retail with it, um, in, for many owners, is gonna be a challenge. Not all, but for many it is, especially affordable housing projects. They don't, Michael Monte just doesn't want to deal with it. He doesn't know, he didn't know what he would do with it.
Is this a hurry-up timeline?
No. No, I think where we're looking at is, you know, we'd love to start construction next spring or something like that, but, you know, P Corrs, I'm sure, are fairly patient people.
And they don't own the Mobile Home Park anymore, right?
No, that was sold as a co-op, I believe.
Co-op home, yeah.
So, um, the, at one point, you were talking about the access being something that might be shared with the Mobile Home Park and...
There was some discussion about that, and it was, it was not, uh, it was not a condition of subdividing these lots out, and I believe that the P Corrs would prefer not to have that.
Uh-huh, okay.
Does the Mobile Home Park access Route Seven now directly, or do they have to go through this property?
They go through this property.
They have to go through this property now?
Yeah, they're sort of a paved area, but, no, I think they have two accesses.
They have their own accesses.
Yeah, they have their own.
They have two.
Penny lane.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's all, it's really a little screwy. I mean, the, the water lines go through the Mobile Home Park to this, we'd have to change a lot of things here. So, history has not, not done us any favors on all this, so...
So, as, as next steps, could we look at the options of, like, predict suggestion, um, re-characterizing that area? I mean, it's not zoning at that point, different district, right?
Drive it from that.
Right.
So, we could...
And, and then we could talk through, 'cause I don't know these off the top of my head, but, um, then we could talk through the other challenges, 'cause if, if residential, I mean, if they didn't have that same build-to-zone, then that might offer flexibility. If it does, then we would need to look at, well, how would we handle exceptions like this, that clearly it's a, it's a lot-size thing, it's what's practical. Um, and then, looking at things like the, uh, building height, number of units, whereas a single building would be a, a nice option. And then the, uh, I would imagine in residential, the first-floor active use wouldn't be a requirement, but I couldn't say that for certain right now. I don't think it is.
You mean, source having retail on the first floor?
Right.
For not when it's strictly residential.
Right, if it's strictly residential, it wouldn't, I just don't remember what the rules were. Uh, and then the, the two-feet-above-grade requirement, as you were pointing out, is challenging.
Well, that's an easy one to change.
Right, right, yeah, that would...
I think so, doesn't make a lot of sense.
And we would need to look at that in all places, I think.
And I'm not even sure that Brandy didn't already...
That could be part of the package, right?
I'm not sure that she didn't, and I didn't think to look at it before, but I will.
Right, so we, we should review those updates anyway, because I think based on the work that went into it, that would create some clarifications and potentially some additional flexibility?
Could I throw out one other minor thing?
Please.
You reference a first-floor ceiling height. Would you, I think what you mean to do is reference a floor-to-floor height, which would be more effective for you as opposed to say, 'cause a ceiling can go, occur anywhere within a floor, do you see what I'm saying? In other words, I can have, you say a nine-foot ceiling height minimum, what my sense is, what we should do is define, say, eleven-foot floor-to-floor in your first floor, where they put their ceiling within that floor is their business. But you might want to just think about how this defines, ceiling doesn't mean much, but a floor-to-floor means, that's, that's a structural thing there, and that, that would go a lot more to getting at what you're trying to get at.
Mm-hmm.
So...
So, how, how much the, I've been trying to figure out on Google Earth, how, how big is the, or how wide is the existing building?
How wide is the bowling alley?
Yeah. Just, just the, um...
Eighty-eight. Wide? Wow. That's a lot of lane.
Is it that wide?
It kind of stretches it all back.
Yeah.
It's not that wide.
'Cause I was almost wondering, like, what if you could just put a building in roughly that footprint and just go up and have parking underneath, and then you could have this really nice front yard that could actually be, you know, the nice...
You build in that lot, build on that?
Yeah, just kind of, kind of rebuild on that footprint. I was just thinking about, like, what would be a really great, you know, if you could do anything you wanted, what would that be? What would that look like?
Hard to deal with stormwater.
Yeah, I would probably want to go up and then have stormwater towards the back end, but other than that, I mean, I mean, it can be done, certainly. Um, I would, regardless, you would need to take that entire building down and go from there. You wouldn't save anything, that building on that.
Right.
And it's not, it's not a good width for housing, and God knows, I wouldn't want to have any part of that building in part of a new building.
No, no, I wasn't, I wasn't suggesting reusing it in any way, just, just the, just the location on the site.
Yeah.
It is, for, from a housing standpoint, it's far back.
From that point of view, absolutely, yeah.
And if, you know, just as, as a, like, what if this could be redesigned in, you know, a way that, you know, would be more appealing from a housing standpoint?
From a housing standpoint, it certainly would be, yeah.
Yeah, and then you could have a really nice big front yard that could be programmed with all sorts of interesting active uses. Parking could happen largely underneath the structure, which would be great for stormwater, um, you know, um...
Yeah. No, I think if you, if you, you could make it work so that you could, you could do that.
All the parking could be underneath if you, if you were to construct a kind of like deck, you know, that the building then sat on top of, you know? I mean, just if we're really...
You could come close, probably not quite all of it, but, you know, if you look at that drawing right there, that takes into account all the parking we can get underneath, and you could never get all the parking you need under the building because of, um, it, you've got various other things down there, you can never quite get all... You can never quite get all the parking you need down there. It's close, but you can't quite get it all.
Yeah.
Depends on, depends on your parking regs, but, you know, and sometimes affordable housing, you can get, come closer, 'cause sometimes you can get a waiver, 'cause quite often, uh, tenants there may only have one car. So, as opposed to two, which you might have in an average, single-family home, you'd have two cars quite often, 'cause you're, you know, you're just off somewhere, but.
The Yankee Doodle project, as I understand it, is, um, has a significant elderly component, at least in part, because the parking requirement is half for a standard apartment.
Yeah.
And then you can start to make things fit. Like I said earlier, most of the parking for that project is gonna be under the building.
Yeah, if you're on a public transit or you're elderly.
There's public transit here.
Then that makes a big difference. If you're not on public transit, then you're really stuck, regardless of the income levels, you're stuck with two cars quite often if there's two people in there. Yeah, 'cause everybody else to get to work.
Okay, aren't, by suggesting that, aren't you like totally throwing out form-based zoning, like entirely? Aren't, like, you're encouraging IDX to happen again, right? Isn't, isn't that?
No, I'm not, I'm not suggesting at all that parking would be in the front. I'm just, I'm just trying to, um, imagine, this was all predicated on the idea that we were gonna have retail on first floors, so everything was up close to the road, and then housing up top. And so, just hearing that, that that's not necessarily what the market, um, you know, it is, it will sustain, so, so.
So that'd be the model that plays across from, uh, 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 the Chevrolet dealer.
Yeah.
The Chevy dealer, right. And it's, that's, that's probably six stories tall, or five stories tall, it's a very tall building, but they've got a big front yard with a pool out front, right? And then parking's underneath or around the back.
Yeah, and, I mean, I, I don't think of that as particularly, you know, paragon of good design, but, um.
I, I'm not advocating, I'm not advocating, I'm just trying to put this.
And, and actually, in that case, the front of the building is on, is behind that building. I mean, that's one of the reasons why it looks so sort of strange on Route seven, is because the, the front is actually on the other side of the building, the entrance. So, you know, it's, it's another building, you know, mooning Route seven. So, um, um, but no, I think, I think you could, I think you could make a really nice. Hey, no, I mean, I'm, I'm from Washington DC, we have these everywhere on our great avenues, everywhere. Where you have a tall building and you have a gorgeous, um, you know, landscaped front yard that is really nice, and it's, there's no parking anywhere, I mean, it's, it's programmed with, you know, just a beautiful landscape that people occupy and that adds a great deal to the public realm. So, um, and provides stormwater, uh, management as well. So, anyway, I'm just, I'm just kind of thinking, if, if we are thinking about, um, allowing a project like this, which would be a large housing project that doesn't have a retail component, well, what would that look like? You know, how?
Right.
That's what, that's where I'm trying to go. And, and trying to imagine it in the broader context, not just on the lot, but how would this fit in the broader context? What would, what would support this?
And I think with this, yeah, I agree. I mean, we, we set this so we parked as much as we could underneath the one building, and it doesn't mean that we couldn't park underneath the other building, but, um, we are also trying to avoid a second elevator in the second building, so if we had one building, we'd have one elevator. In this case, with that second build, uh, building here, we can get all of our, we can get what are the required handicap units on the ground level, therefore, we can't park underneath it, so that was just one way of looking at that. If we raised this up and parked underneath the second building, we would then add a second elevator, which is another hundred and twenty thousand dollars or so to this. So, having one building that you were talking about, Kate, was, would economically make a little bit more sense and allow more parking underneath the building, because then, then this would.
So, is the ideal scenario sort of one building about halfway back in the lot, so that you've got that sense of a front space that could be used, but also all the parking could be wrapped around behind?
And you might wanna think, and you're right, it's, okay, so what do you do? What are, what's the developer's obligations to the front, that front area, you know what I'm saying? And is there a sense of entry also designated? We've run by, into this with other municipalities where they require an entry on the front, but all the parking in the back, which is always a fascinating situation, so it doesn't look like you've turned your back to the street, but the reality is that entry never gets used.
Although, in this case, you're right on Route seven for transit walk, walkability.
You could make that work, we, we could certainly.
Sort of a pedestrian entrance.
Yeah, we could certainly make something work there.
Well, we do require a sidewalk that connects to the.
We would, we would probably create an entry, you know, up over here. We've gotta walk here and we come out, 'cause we know that there would be, and there may be a bus stop that be put here. You know, I don't, that, that would be something we, you may require or, for someone, and that's, that, those are all things we've done in the past. So, um, in that sense, then you would have a sense of entry to this front in a sense. And then, but your real front would be probably down here, where people would then come in and use the same elevator, just access it from a different point. That's fine.
So if you create a park or a playground or something in front, that would give another use for that front door that the folks inside would be coming in and out of?
Yeah.
If that was, almost included as part of the building on the street was that courtyard.
Right, but you might wanna think, for the purpose of the DRB, what would you wanna see there in those? That's all I'm saying, and if it's a sense, a sense of entry, that can always be done.
I guess that's, I mean, it raises the question of why some of these rules were, were written. Like, the, the thing that, you know, occurs to me is that seventy-five percent being right against the road. You know, maybe that's, it, I mean, sure, as far as retail goes, that makes a lot of sense to try to put a whole bunch of retail up there, but for residential, it doesn't, but we could also just cut back that seventy-five percent to, say, twenty-five percent. And, you know, maybe there's this big long building that goes east-west, gets all the solar gain, it's still close to the street, where it is close to the street, but the rest of it is farther back, and I'm not sure, you know, that's not necessarily giving everybody the view out to the mountains that you wanna have, but, um, but it would, it would get you close to the street and it would open up view access from Shelburne Road for the rest of us that don't live there to see past that. I mean, if we try to encourage, like, a building that goes straight across the site, even if it's, you know, farther back and down, it's still gonna be so high that, you know, it's still blocking any kind of view for, for anybody on Shelburne Road. Um, you know, maybe we oughta encourage, you know, even if it is one single building that goes that way, it's, the, the idea, I'm assuming that breaking up it in, breaking it into smaller buildings of no more than twenty-two units is so that it's not a megalith, you know, against the road. So, you know, if we allow certain things to happen to, to, to get the, the end, rather than to, you know, prescribe the, the means in a certain way, you know, maybe we could, if, we'd have to define what end we wanna have. You know, if we want that to be, um, that we see a smaller kind of building facade on Shelburne Road, maybe we don't. Then, you know, we can shift things around in the form-based zoning and allow, you know, bigger buildings to, to happen and open space.
Uh, yeah, I, 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 myself, I think that could make, we could certainly make something like that work easily, and, and the idea of a view off of Shelburne Road down is an interesting thought to incorporate it. It's a view corridor, Burden has view corridors, you know, so.
And not every spot on Shelburne Road has that view corridor potential, that's for sure.
Right, and, and.
Trying to move that spot, I feel like, you know, the current bowling alley's down low enough. Because that lot slopes down to it, I don't know how much you actually see past beyond, 'cause there's woods, houses.
I think it's still higher than where your eye is.
You're fifteen feet above, you're sixteen to seventeen feet at least above the nearest mobile home, in that case. So, depending on how tall the trees are, you certainly would get a, you know, view, and if, if you essentially build on one side, you know, if you, if you built down here and opened up this side and entered here and, and created a, you know, a place for the public to pull off, or anyone to pull off here and see here, and then look down there, that, that would be an interesting thought, and I think that's probably what you're getting at there is.
Yeah, either on the south side of the lot or the north side of the lot, it seems like you could.
Yeah.
Either since your unfortunate access is right in the middle, you could, you could go to either side.
You can go to either side, I think, I mean, we would probably, just the way the lot is and the entry, we'd probably come to the south side. But it would be doable, and, uh, you know, you could govern the massing of the building and say, you know, after a certain length of facade or something like this, the facade needs to change or whatever, so you don't get, you know, a monolith sense of, yeah, there's, I mean, there's all, you, you have some tools there that somebody, like, a developer could work with, certainly.
Something to point out in terms of this issue of, you know, how much do you change the frontage zone occupancy requirement? You can, you can work with some of the existing requirements and do some of the things you want by the creation of lot lines. So, if you were to think of this parcel as having, being divided into three, and you were gonna be developing the northerly one, it's gonna have a smaller frontage requirement, because it's only one-third of that, so you're gonna have the ability to do a, do a building that is relatively narrow and close to Route seven, but it's essentially is a horizontal building. I just wanted to point that out, that there are ways to work with the existing code combined with subdivision to do some of the things that you're talking about, but not everybody's gonna wanna subdivide, or not every lot will necessarily lend itself to subdivision, but the creation of lot lines is something that's anticipated when you are using form-based zoning.
We would, we would lose units, therefore, we wouldn't do it, because our units are based on the square footage of the lot. And we looked at that, said if we divide this into three lots, one on either side, in the front, one in the back, we would lose enough units that we wouldn't, it wouldn't be viable then.
Oh, that's interesting. But if the principle of keeping the, you know, if the ideas that are embedded in this are still important, then maybe the issue is, or the fix is, density bonus.
Well, here's another thought, what about, um, you're talking about density bonuses, waivers, you know, these sort of extra things, if somebody goes the extra mile or needs something more? We're still with conditional uses, the DRB is in charge. What if, what if the, we could ask the design review committee if they would like to be in charge of deciding, you know, what is superior design, 'cause I would have a lot more confidence in their determination of that than the DRB.
I'm just not sure where, well, okay, so you're saying it would go to the DRB for conditional use review in terms of density bonus? I mean, the, the code has density bonuses spelled out, there's no, for people that are working with the, um, so-called landmark properties, that's spelled out right in the code, that's not something that the DRB decides. I'm just saying that if, the density bonuses could be a table in the regs.
No, just, we're talking about adding more flexibility, just generally, and, um, we, we discuss maybe a waiver process, maybe there's something where you could get more density for, there's certain things that we wanna try and achieve. I mean, I'm thinking that economic development, affordable housing, stormwater, you know, we're trying to, it, those are our sort of, you know, the large goals that we've been talking about, so, well, maybe people who really step up and try and do that, but, you know, need a waiver from the regulations in order to be able to do that, that are, you know, intend to do it in a, um, a way that is, you know, superior, is gonna result in a superior product, built product, built outcome, we provide a density bonus for that, you know?
Something that Housing Subcommittee was starting to talk about, coming to you with.
Yeah, so, you know, but, but who gets to, you know, be the decider of what is a superior product? I, again, I think that should be something that the design review, um, folks are the arbiters of, just like they would be in an, in a historic preservation situation.
How does the density bonus help, though?
Well, um.
I mean, how does it help in a case of a residential project? Because it, it would just, you'd be able to put more affordable units on, but you still would be pressed up against Route seven with seventy-five percent of your building.
Well, well, I think that if we look at this through the prism of economic development, and so like what there is actual demand for, and secondly, the fact that we're trying to address a lot of stormwater um, in, in the corridor, that stuff like seventy-five percent has to be up against the street is, that's gone. Those requirements are, that, that, we're, 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 we're thinking really differently.
Well, why, why throw that out entirely? Why can't we have a, like, a staggered percentage, like residential twenty-five percent? 'Cause no one wants to live on Shelburne Road, so you say twenty-five percent are, are kind of like throwaway units, but you still get the effect of putting it, the building up close to the street, like form, form-based zoning seems to wanna have, but something like retail or, or office or something like that, they wouldn't mind having more frontage and probably would wanna have more frontage, so maybe seventy-five percent for frontage and then fifty percent for another use, I don't know, but.
Building types already do that, building types have differing percentages, so that you, you're already doing that. You may need to tweak it further.
So seventy-five percent is the low?
No, there are, I think there are some as low as fifty percent.
Well, yeah, noting the time.
We could talk about this.
But, but I, I, I just think if, if, if economic development and stormwater are our two main goals, I just don't think that the, the code that we have is calibrated to either of those, um, needs. And, and the economic development is because things, the market demand has changed on us since we adopted the code, so we have new realities, but the stormwater piece is something that we were really kind of imagining on a, like, well, we're trying to address it on a lot-by-lot basis, and I think that one of the things that we were starting to talk about, this was, of course, months ago, so just, you guys may not remember, um, but is, is looking at it more on a watershed basis, in which case, um, you know, uh, the, the regulations are really not at all set up for doing that. And so, and Dick had a very interesting idea last time or two times ago about transfer of development rights as a mechanism. So, um, I, I just, I think we should go back and just have a look, really big picture, at what we wanna try and achieve. Um, and, but in the meantime, we can certainly, um, add some more flexibility in the ways that you've been talking about, Stephen, I think.
How, how do we go about redoing this, rather than, you know, just a piece at a time, like, like we've been doing it? Like, should we have a whole other big, you know, discussion with that?
It didn't go through the form-based zoning in the first place. I, I think that this would be a great, moving forward of using this as an example, and maybe next time we can talk about, um, what it would mean to change the character district in that area? Like, what does residential look like, how could that accommodate that, what are the implications? I mean, is there a, I just don't know off the top of my head, is there a residential district there? So it'd be easy enough to just add this in as a carve-out, and there may be some other rules that need to be tweaked to accommodate something like this, but this is also bringing up much bigger points about how do you look at stormwater? How do you look at it at a bigger level? There are some big picture concepts that we could get into, but we could easily get into form-based code, character districts, get people oriented, just as a first step.
If you add density to this, you're gonna increase storm runoff, just due to parking, although the changes that we make will reduce parking somewhat.
Yeah, I mean, if stormwater, you go, govern by a lot.
So if you go with bigger numbers, more parking, then you're really going against the stormwater. I think a number may be okay for residential.
And these are things we can.
Because of the stormwater, the other thing I just wanted to comment on stormwater, um, about the stormwater utility. The stormwater utility is not going to build any stormwater functions. They might take over some residential systems, pumping and stuff, but they're not going to be involved in commercial at all, other than, um, billing, so. As far as using it as a, thinking of it as a utility. as using it as, thinking of it as a utility that's actually taking care of stormwater, that's not what it is. The utility itself is the billing of, for stormwater townwide.
Paying the utilities, quoting money to...
Do projects.
Do the projects that the town is doing as a permittee, because think of it this way, think of the town as a developer, and we have to figure out a way to pay for our stormwater improvements, and the way that the town will do it is through a utility.
But they won't be doing it on, they won't be, they have a certain number of projects already that are, that are designed to be done in the next three years, I think.
Well, it's a 20-year program, and we're about year four already.
Well, there's more projects.
Yeah, but we can guide development so that it supports those goals.
Question, Tyler, just before he slides out the door, is it really out?
And my, my question was just in terms of, when, when you look at a property in a project, I'm wondering if there's ever a time where you're like, you know what, we're not going to build all the units that we could, that the zoning allows us to? Or is it sort of typical to say, we're going to maximize the number of units that the zoning allows us?
Well, we are not builders.
Underst- understood, but...
But typically, they're not building as much as they can.
As they're permitted, as they're permitted to.
Yeah, because there's some costs that are allocated, whether you build 15 or whether you build 25.
Right.
That just, they're, they're, they're going to be there.
I just wanted, sort of in the, in the context of thinking about, you know, density bonuses and that sort of thing, I mean, what we're, what we as a board would really be saying is, that's what would be built there. If somebody comes in, anybody comes in and looks at that lot, whether we say 24 units or 50 units. That's likely what's going to pop up.
Likely what's going to pop up.
Yeah.
And, uh, you know, and I don't know, Michael Monty came up with the point that, you know, he couldn't drop much more below 31 units on this to make it work. 33 is not a big project, you know? We're typically hitting 40, 44 or 50 units. As affordable housing, in order to make them viable, because, you know, they're not profit-making operations. So, you know, if this were a different profit motivation on this, they might be able to go with fewer units. I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
But I'm not sure who would want to live right on Shelburne Road in that case. I mean, if you're going to, you know what I'm saying, that's, I don't know. I don't do the marketing on these. Thank God. Let's do the design work. Well, thank you. I appreciate your time very much.
Thank you for the feedback.
Really do, yeah, absolutely.
Helpful. Cheers.
So, yeah, if we could frame this for potentially next time, just to continue the discussion and look at character districts and what this means with the overall bigger picture of this initiative.
And please don't leave before we lock in our time.
Time, yeah. You know, we're open, you too. Um, all right, so if that's that, just, do we want to make some comments on the cleanup amendment?
Uh, I don't know that I would, given the hour.
Right.
I can send some stuff out.
Excellent. Um, and then, uh, under other business, I was just going to comment that we, um, the Energy Subcommittee, I think the charge, we basically just updated the charge to reflect the language that we all discussed during that meeting. Um, and we did get, Jeff Loiter has offered to be on the board, uh, so I guess I'll just say that he's, he's appointed. Um, and then, I haven't, I haven't officially heard back from Matt Dooley, so if it's okay to talk smack in these meetings, I'll just officially appoint him, and if there's somebody else that wants to jump in, then I'll, we can unappoint him and appoint them. And otherwise, it'd be... Right, I figured there might be some support. There we go. So, um, so Matt, show up. And, and I would encourage other people to get involved as well.
Similar lines, the Housing Subcommittee had the resignation of Brian Precor, and they were talking earlier at their meeting tonight, that they'll be trying to identify people who might be able to approach you and say, hey, I'd like to join the Housing Subcommittee.
Excellent, yeah, so we do have an open spot there.
Because of Brian. And, and Mark Brooks has made it known that because of his schedule and status, he, he may not, um, stay on for much longer, but they, they basically said he had to find his replacement before he could go.
I like it. All right. Excellent. Well, if there's anything else, anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make the motion.
All right, move by Dick, second by Kate. All in favor?
Hi.